All right, we'll stand for the pledge.
Can you just hold it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the November fifth quarter education meeting. We're now transitioning to number four on the agenda, which is comments to the public. Are there any comments from the public providing any ideas that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will go to item five, which is to adopt our agenda with the one revision of the addition of 2.9, which was a legal matter, individual employee, as it was the one added executive session item that we had mentioned earlier. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
All in favor? All right, motion carries. Now we go to tonight's consent agenda for personnel, item six, special services, seven, and business eight. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agendas?
So move.
All in favor? So motion carries. And so that brings us to our unfinished business, which is our policies, our first reads.
Okay, we have three policies for first read, and Gina and I are working on policy with the policy committee together this year, so we're both going to talk about those policies. And then obviously if you have questions, let us know, and the policy committee will want to thank you for your help working through these policies. So the first one, 5605, I'll talk about. There was a new law enacted last year where we have to provide students the opportunity to pre-register to vote. So students can now, people can pre-register, which means you register and then when you turn 18, the Board of Elections, you become registered to vote when you turn 18, and that will be held done by the Board of Elections. So this policy has to be put in place by January 1st. The law was changed in the spring, so we were working on it over the summer to learn about it. There's not a lot new about this yet because it's brand new, so it hasn't been implemented. I'm sure we'll go through a few changes, some recommendations from NISB as we learn how this actually plays out. But we did draft a policy for you that we believe, that we are sure aligns with what the law says. It's basically that when a student turns 16, as long as they're not 18 by the time of the election, like today is the election, so some students may turn 18 and can register on their own. But if they're not 18 while they're in school, when there's an election, they can pre-register. And the school will set up a system to allow them the opportunity to pre-register. So we're going to do that with, we'll put that responsibility on the building principal to organize a way to do that, and talks with Chris right now, he's working with the social studies chairperson, Jen Layton, to integrate that into our United States history course. So that seems like the good place. The history department's really interested in this, it fits right in with the curriculum in getting kids to understand the democratic process. We make it clear in the policy, and this is also in the law, that you can in no way tie that to course credit or to an assignment of points, or hold it against kids who don't want to pre-register. Kids can opt not to pre-register, you can't make them do it.
Don't they currently do this in, well, they used to do it in econ, which you don't.
If you're 18, you've registered them, but there's now a law that you have to provide that, yeah. And so we will pre-register the form out, the Board of Elections figures out if a kid is eligible to, you know, you have to meet some requirements to vote, which basically you're a United States citizen, you're 18, and you've lived where you've lived for a certain amount of time. And that's that policy. It's a brand-new policy for us.
All right, and the next policy that we're going to review tonight is 4526, which is our technology and network acceptable use and personal privacy policy that you all are likely familiar with. This was revised and adopted in 2017, but we felt the need to go back and take a look at it. As we know, technology is ever-evolving, and sometimes devices are updated and include certain capabilities that really warrant the need for us to take a look at our policy to ensure that we are speaking to any of those capabilities that may infringe upon specifically the personal, the privacy considerations. So in this case, I would just draw your attention to page four on the trap changes under privacy considerations. We added a sentence in there, and this really speaks to various audio functions that allow others to listen in on any person on district premises or district events, that we're also including that in there to say that we would also need the express prior permission of each recording subject with that particular feature. So we'd like to include that, just to ensure that we're covered in terms of the audio functions that allow others to listen in.
Just one other question about technology. I don't have anything specific in my mind, but with the potential for the high school to have cell service, is there anything additional that we need to do just regarding acceptable use of the wireless networks in the school? And obviously, when somebody goes on those networks, then we're not monitoring it the same way that we are when traffic goes through our network. I don't know, it's just one thought I had.
Yeah, I'm trying to wonder if, what other obstacles will be there, but if we have cell service, we may lose some opportunity to monitor. I'll have to talk about that.
Right.
Because they're no longer online by, for our systems? That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know, just maybe something to think about, I'm sure.
So there's an app, apparently like a VPN app, that students can use.
Yes.
Is there a way, yeah.
To block it, to block the system.
Yeah. I don't know, I haven't seen anything in this around any type of, you know, I don't even know what you would call that, but essentially usurping the system, utilizing some type of virtual private network.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I can't say that we've had any decline in our number of YAGL items that have come over, but I'm sure they are, if we're using it.
Yeah.
You need some pretty sophisticated software to catch that, or stop that.
But it could be something.
And again, I'm just seeing, there's no mention in here of a virtual private network, and again, I don't.
That's another thing, too.
Maybe wasted, but I'm just wondering if we're attacking this now, maybe that's just something we're going to ask Andrew about or something, I don't know, I'm just bringing it up because I didn't see anywhere.
It's worth thinking about, should there be something in there, even despite the fact that it might be incredibly hard to catch someone.
Saying that you have to.
Nevertheless, it still could be a policy and a rule.
No use of independent networks or something like that, I don't know. At least it's in the policy, may be difficult to monitor and enforce, but certainly, if we're going to have a policy around that, I think that that would be addressed.
And it would be better to say, you're not allowed to do that, and then kids are violating it, as opposed to you can just do it, and we have no, we know it's happening, we have a way to monitor it.
We'll consult with Andrew and then.
Just a thought on that, I'm sorry to.
No, no, that's a great point.
So we could look at that if we feel it's complicated and it needs to go back to the policy committee, we could do that. If we feel it's fairly simple and can explain it here, we could do that as well, but we'll let us do a little homework on it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or does the policy committee, am I okay with that?
That's right.
If it's simple, we'll just bring it back here.
And the references to staff, a couple of staff and any other, right, is also addressed in here.
Yeah.
And everybody consents to this policy prior to the school year beginning?
Every year.
Every year. And then the last policy is 9320, drug-free workplace. This policy was over 10 years old, so this was on our list to take a look at, to update. When we were consulting with our council on whether or not the initial paragraph that begins with the Board of Education was sufficient enough and that we could just update it, we were informed of three additions, and I'll just highlight those additions. The first addition is the second paragraph that begins with mind-altering substances, that that mind-altering substances also be included in this policy, that they not be brought onto district property or to district activity except when required by a doctor's prescription. When we talked about this at the policy committee, we thought perhaps maybe those would just be covered under controlled substances, but we were advised to include a specific paragraph surrounding mind-altering substances. The second piece is that, as the district already does currently and is our practice, that anytime we have employees that have any issues related to substance, or any issues for that matter, we do offer them the services through our employee assistance program. So we just wanted to memorialize that in the policy. And then finally, any failure to comply with the policy or infraction related to this policy, that it could be as a result rehabilitative measures could also be required, and that's again, something that's already in practice, but again, just wanted to add that into our policy as well.
Just the one question I had on this was, the sentence, employees who have been convicted of drug-related offenses occurring in the workplace must notify the Human Resources Department of the conviction within five calendar days. So here's the two questions would be, first, if there was someone convicted of a drug-related offense occurring in the workplace, presumably, you'd have to be part of that process, so we would know already, and I guess if we weren't for some odd reason, is five days too much just because you could envision a scenario where the student's safety at risk? So do we want immediate notification or next business day notification?
Then the word convicted is what we talked about, so we may know that they could be charged, that they were found with the mind-altering substance, but are they actually convicted? We may not know that, so they have to let us know.
Oh, I see. I got you.
Yeah, that came up.
That makes sense.
Yes, conviction was something we actually missed, we talked it through with the policy committee and realized.
That makes sense, because the case can be ongoing and you're monitoring it every day.
So the word conviction is the key.
Is he on it? Yeah, is he? What if the offense didn't occur in the workplace, but it occurred somewhere else and then was convicted?
And there's a conviction.
Is that, what?
And there's a conviction.
And there's, yeah. Let me, do we have, I guess this is, I'm sorry, drug-free workplace, so, okay.
Do we have any legal right to know, to know if?
Oh, we get the conviction.
We get notified if someone.
Right, even if it happens off the, outside.
Yes, but this policy is only dealing.
As an educator, you get notified.
We are notified.
So it's five day, five work day, is that okay?
Of a conviction.
Or do we ever envision? Is there any reason to give them that much time?
Probably for them to get their attorney.
This is probably legally based, is this?
Yeah, this was an US thing, this wasn't an US thing, but I wonder.
It was a lawyer.
There might be a law.
It was a legal.
Oh, it was.
NISB didn't have an update, and this was from legal counsel.
If there's a reason that legal counsel thinks, that should be five days. I mean, we could inquire if you want to find out why that is.
Let's go back and just see if that's too many days, and see if we can.
Want to do that?
Yeah.
If there's no legal requirement, why not?
Why not, just making it immediate, you know, the next business day or something.
They might not have access to four. I don't know. I don't know.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, so we can get a motion to adopt as first read all three policies.
So, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to, knowing that this is tonight, but I'm sure that will not be the case very soon, but we'll take it for tonight. We'll go to staff reports.
Okay, I will start. I just want to remind the board, November 19th, we are having our Board of Education retreat. I'm looking forward to our agenda topics, just really about board governance, roles and responsibilities, leadership, communication, team protocols. From my perspective, this is a very, very strong Board of Education, so having discussions like that now, when there are not like prevailing issues, but it's a board that's really looking to strengthen its governance even more, I think is fantastic. We will have Susan Wolin and Ken Mitchell with us, who will help to facilitate that board retreat, I'm really looking forward to that. We have, I'm looking forward also to our December curriculum conversation, you'll be happy to know Christina Wilson from the Guidance Liaison, and Chris Walsh are going to come and talk to us about what their approach has been for the Guidance Department this year, which I think you will really like to hear what they have been working on. Of course, you could send me or Tim, any questions you have in advance, he'll facilitate that discussion. Yeah.
Will that be a K through 12 guidance discussion, or predominantly high schools?
It will be a high school guidance discussion. One other thing is a conversation that I've had with a couple of members of the B A H E F, who have been really asking about world languages at younger levels and what the district's philosophy is about that and where we think we're going with it. Remember in 2009, Melissa Stahl and Tim participated in a very intense research study of world languages?
Two years.
It took two years, and they looked at some research, they looked at some programs, and started to ask questions, and I guess, you know, the question also came up of, should we be offering what we're currently offering, or should we be looking at another offering to replace one of the offerings we currently have? So there were a lot of questions around world languages. This B A H E F question, and their ideas surrounding it, of course, are the Board of Education thoughts and decisions. So I was very happy to hear them talking about that and inquiring about it. Tim and I met with Melissa Stahl, and we said, you know, it's been a good 10 years since research has been done on language acquisition, is the research still the same? Has anything changed? Have there been some new programs in nearby schools that we can go look at, FLESS programs? Let's start to go down that lane again and just say, is it something that we are sure about, that decision about 10 years later? So we're excited about embarking on that. Melissa's already steeped in data, and we are looking at what our current K-5 schedules even permit. I mean, I don't even know that there's time in that little kid's school day to be adding yet another thing, but we will go look at a couple of nearby programs, we found two that we really liked, and we'll start to do a little bit of that research and bring it back to the board. We said probably in like February or March, right?
Yeah, there's a regional conference on world languages that both Melissa and I are attending, so we want to network a little bit there, talk to some others, see what's happening, and just have some time to put together an update on our research.
And I like this for a few reasons. It's good to look at a question and to start looking at your own practices and what we're doing here, and what is research saying, and what is out there, and have a fresh either validation of what we're doing to move forward, or make some enhancements if we think we need to. And the B A H E F, you know, could be viable partners in some of that work if that's where the board decides to go. So that was exciting. Next, I, we had the working parents meeting, which was pretty well-attended and really a great discussion. Of course, Tim and I had like the 900, you know, PowerPoint slides and everything, and pretty much at the last minute, we were given a bunch of questions that people had, and we said, forget the presentation, we're going to go for the questions. And we started answering the questions and then pulling up our slides that had to do with the questions, and it was an organic and fantastic conversation, and parents.
It was a great meeting.
Really felt good about it, yeah. Yeah, it was great, so I very much enjoyed that. We talked a lot about STEAM, a lot about historical thinking, and what we're doing with that in social studies classes. So it was pretty exciting. Switching gears a little bit, I wanted to update the board, first of all, on that Commissioner of Education search. Oh my goodness. So the interim commissioner, you remember the commissioner, resigned, and then the interim commissioner, Beth Berlin, resigned, and now we have an acting Commissioner of Education, Shannon Tahoe, who's going to sit in that position until they can try to fill it.
We've got an email about it today, I think.
Yeah. We also have the unfortunate passing of Judith Johnson, our regent, who was really just a remarkable, I had many opportunities to meet her, she was a remarkable educator and human being and child advocate.
She was very thoughtful.
She was absolutely amazing. Her seat, and that's an unpaid position, she did that position for those five years. She, that seat is going to remain open until the spring, when they do their regular process, and there's a lot going on right now that's, I wish we had somebody there to represent us. We have the revised high school graduation standards that they're looking at, new standardized tests for three to eight, and the choosing of the new commissioner, which the regent helps with. So this is, this is not a good time for Rockland, Westchester, Dutchess, Orange, and Putnam to not be represented, so.
APPR regulations.
APPR, it's like, a lot of decisions being made, but maybe not a lot of people home to make them, so, just a difficult time for that. And then, really great student highlights. We have upcoming, the state qualifiers and state meets for the varsity boys and girls cross-country. We had an incredible win for our boys in the sectional semifinals, and now they are going on to the section finals at 3:00 on Saturday for football, that's going to be at Mayapac, good luck to them. And the girls volleyball lost on Sunday in the finals at Pace University to Ardsley. They played a very tough game, they have had just an incredible season. I saw the last three games leading up to the game that I saw on Sunday, and first of all, they're just an incredible bunch of young women who worked so incredibly hard together as a, they're remarkable to watch as a team. They were awesome. And it was a hard game against Ardsley, they had some very difficult players. I feel very much like Ira, who was in the stands that day, but I guess I'm here to report. And the last one, which we just heard about, Ellie and Alyssa Margolin, took third place in the New York State Tennis Championships. They are the first to qualify in decades for Byram. They, the third-place finish is one of the highest in our school's history. So wow, wow, wow.
Nice thing for two sisters to share.
Oh, yeah. Isn't that fantastic, and a wonderful family to enjoy that.
Yeah, great, great end to a great season for girls tennis.
Great end to the superintendent's report.
I have a few things to share, I'll make it up here. So I just want to give, come on, an update on, a few items that relate to your board goal on excellence in teaching and learning. I'll start with mathematics. K-5, as you know, we're implementing a new mathematics curriculum, K-5. In 1718, we started in K in one, and last year, we started implementing it in two, three, and four, and this year is our first year in grade five, so it was a slow rollout. And we're continuing ongoing professional development. I always commit to three to five years of PD, we'll evaluate it each year and see where we need to go to deepen it, to make sure the program's being implemented appropriately. And I want to give you a little flavor of what that professional development looks like. This is an example of a second-grade classroom, I believe it was last week or recently, and the way it works is we use a lesson-study approach, which has three parts to it. We have the staff developer who comes in, who's an expert in the program and in mathematics, and she'll meet with the grade level, and we'll spend a little bit less than an hour planning a lesson and talking about the nuances of the lesson, and choosing how it's going to work and how we're going to ask questions and what examples to use. And then we'll go in, and that consultant works with a classroom teacher, and they co-teach the class together, the consultant modeling how to implement the program, while the rest of the classroom teachers stand around and watch and take notes on what kids are saying. So you'll see in some of these pictures, some other teachers in the room.
I love doing that, by the way.
Like this one here. So we're all watching these kids, and it's amazing, first of all, that our kids don't bat an eye. They don't mind that there's 10 adults in the room taking notes on every little word.
They do know the adults, though.
They know most of us because we're in there a lot, so it's very comfortable, but, you know, they just perform like normal. And then after the lessons talk, we go back into brief about it, and every nuance of it, what question you ask, why you asked that question, why give this group that example. So this was a lesson on making a number by doing what we call skip counting in second grade. You're getting the concept of addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. So take the number 23, and we first have these linking cubes, these are called, this is a big prop that we use down in the elementary schools that kids develop conceptual knowledge around. So you might give them the number 23, and say, we want you to use these cubes, and we want you to make 23 in groups of two, and then you ask kids to count the groups two, four, six, they're practicing their skip counting, which helps with addition and multiplication. And then you have one left over, and you talk about what that means, and then you'll ask them to do it in fives. So can you now make 23 with five? So now you're doing four groups of five with three left over, instead of your 11 groups of two with one left over. Then you'll ask them to do it with tens, and you talk about, you know, what was easier to count? What you're doing at this age level is you're doing a concept called subtitizing, so it's like if I just show them this right away, and you ask kids to do it, you're getting kids away from counting, one, two, three, to just seeing this and seeing three. It's actually a concept, a cognitive process, that you need kids to get to at some point, and so you're developing that skill with them as well, and you're getting skip counting. You'll break them up into groups, you do that as a full group, then you break them up, and you might differentiate by giving kids different numbers based on their readiness. So I was working with a group of five, and they had a big number, they had 57, and they had to work through practicing, that's this group here, and they were practicing several times, and you could see them get a little more proficient, and as they start to discover that grouping by tens is easier. And what type of questions do you ask them? And the idea is you're watching them, they're working together, you'll ask different ones to do different things, and ask questions that get to the mathematical concepts. So we debriefed the lesson after, so what we're doing there is collectively, as a grade level, you're getting teachers to really understand the program, what it looks like in the classroom, getting the nuance of math teaching, and why it's so important to let kids talk about math and constructing their knowledge of math. And debriefing it helps us really align the curriculum so that all the teachers' expectations for kids are the same. We're learning to differentiate, as you heard Lisa Pellegrino in her presentation last year, talk about low-floor and high-ceiling problems, rich tasks. This is like that as well. Every problem has an entry point for all kids. So that's an example of how we do professional development in math, where the teachers are engaged and hands-on, and part of that time is spent in the classroom, teaching and observing kids. So it's a really embedded practice that is a research-based practice for professional development, where you do it in real time with real kids in the classroom. It's time-consuming, it means teachers are missing some of that instructional time, so there's a bit of a trade-off, and we don't do it all the time, we do it several times a year, and then we try to just imitate that process in our regular school, in our school systems. So that gives you a little bit of a flavor of the intensity of our math work at the elementary, and why we take a lot of time to implement the program and do it well. On another note, you'll have heard Kim Lappel talk about voice circles at the men's school, starting last year, she began doing that, so, Clara's smiling, there you go. So the students are trained to do these voice circles where they get together, and it's a way for students across grade to connect with one another, it's a community-building piece as well, it's getting kids comfortable talking in groups about, you know, to each other about themselves. It seems to be having a big effect on the culture of the building as well, lowering the anxiety with kids and trying to get them to talk and connect with more people throughout the building. So Kim, this year, she also builds ambassadors, so you do this with the whole school, and then you work with a small group of students and train them to be ambassadors, so they can lead voice circles. The idea is you're teaching communication skills, you're teaching kids how to connect with each other, be inclusive. So she explains that at Principal's Coffee, and she demonstrated it with parents, and she had some of these student ambassadors leading student voice circles with our parents, and Clara's quite proud there, he has beaten against her others.
Such wonderful feedback from that day from all the parents. Really, they're so impressed with all the children, and it was a great, it was great. I mean, being there too, it was a great experience.
And it really leads to also the way we develop kids and develop leaders, and let them get comfortable doing things like this, you know, to be a middle school kid leading a conversation with a group of, you know, your parents and your friends' parents is pretty intimidating. I could not have done that as a middle school child. So the fact that we're building our, you know, the kids' ability to do that is really great. And then another leadership piece is, this is a Byron Hills graduate, Ben Baylen, who in our mentor program, the teachers like to bring in examples of kids doing interesting things, maybe some unexpected things, for our freshmen, and help them see what was high school like, what did you do after high school, who are kids who are being leaders? So a few of our teachers, Tom Andreaillon, Steve Borneman, were in contact with Ben Baylen. They asked him to come speak, they thought he would have some interesting stories to tell our freshmen, and they had a great discussion, and got to hang out with some kids during the day, and Ben attended the United States Naval Academy at Annapolis, he majored in mechanical engineering, and he works on a submarine. He had just gotten back from a six-and-a-half-month tour, where he was on the USS Toledo, which was built in 1995. It's now being worked on, it's going to go out one more time, and then it'll be retired after that. It's about the life of a submarine, but he, the kids were really intrigued, that he'd lived on a submarine for six-and-a-half months. I don't know how you do that. You know, and he's an officer, and he really talked a lot about that experience and what leadership was, and, you know, how he grew into this leadership role. He always was interested in the military, he was interested in this from when he was in ninth grade. He said, I was so well-prepared, and he told kids, take advantage of your opportunities here, you will be prepared when you go out into the world. And I like, you know, when someone asks some advice about college, his experience was very different. He said, my experience was probably a lot more controlled than yours might be in other universities, but it was still great and interesting, he's got to travel the world, and talked about the fact that he gets to meet amazing people and really learn about the world, and it's really encouraging our kids to not be afraid to do that, and get out of the arm up bullies, to quote him, and our kids certainly talk about that phrase, and he said, it was really nice for our kids to see that example of someone doing something really different.
That's great.
Yes.
It was a cool experience, a really sweet kid.
And finally, I just want to explain one more thing, as some of you, as you know, and some of you attended, each year, our high school students go through the ritual of being inducted into cum laude, which is the top 10% of the class, and, we're not a superintendent because, as part of this every year, those who are in. because, as part of this every year, those who are in Kum Laoti vote on either teachers and/or administrators, they want to induct the following year, or induct for that year. So this year, they inducted our doctor in Kum Laoti. So she's joining the ranks of this prestigious high school club, and we get to hear the history of the year from Dr. Ed when she talks about Kum Laoti and what it stands for, and Azariah Orjett gets to speak next year at the Kum Laoti ceremony, so we can all attend, and there are wonderful words. Sure, and maybe he'll play the guitar like Chris Lewis did this year.
Make sure Mr. Rogers doesn't play the guitar before.
There won't be no singing.
Chris Lewis sang and played guitar on the song he wrote, because he was inducted last year, and Jen was also inducted this year with Lisa Squadron.
Yes.
And I probably should have the list of all of our inductees, but maybe...
But they will be coming.
They'll be coming, so you're not...
Yes.
Thank you.
And it was a, it was a great honor to be a doctor.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Take that off your head. You're welcome.
A couple of quick things from me, the transportation study is going to begin next week, consultants will be here, kind of the first step in the process of evaluating our routes, the efficiency of our bus routes, and then getting to the, to the point where we're talking about exploring adjustments to our schedule and our times, school start times, see where we are on that. So that'll begin next week, just want to give you a heads-up in terms of projects here at the high school that we're kind of looking at right now, potentially replacement of the scoreboard, the sign over at the high school in the entrance, there's actually a Donatory Authority, State of New York grant that we might be able to get hold of through Assemblyman Buckwald's office. I'm working with him right now to try to get that for us and then replace those, that signage at the high school. Again, at the high school as well, an ongoing issue, if you ever pick your childrens up, children up at high school, is the backup, it's dismissal time, we're going to attempt to try to figure out a way to remedy that situation, maybe similar to what we did at Wompas last summer, where we put a lane in. So we're exploring that, we want to kind of address that and just kind of go from there. So I just want to give you a heads-up on that, that's starting a process, hopefully to be, to alleviate at some point. Finally, cell service in the building, and I've heard this for a while, we're kind of at the, at the end zone of this, the finish line. You know, in any of our drills or any issues, we go ahead and issue with, you know, the inability to make a cell call. We have no cell service in the high school, for example, all our consultants obviously show, tell us that's a, that's a big issue going forward. So the remedy of that situation through Andrew's office is putting a cell receiver over at the high school, a new flagpole. Reason I want to talk to you about this is, previously in conversations with the town, a number of years ago, there was a potential site in a, in a development for a cell tower, it was met with a lot of pushback from the community members, and it was eventually canceled. So this receiver, you know, the cell tower has a potential, let's say, 100% maximum power, this is about 10%, this receiver. So it's just a little different from that project.
It's more like an antenna and that.
Yeah. And the height of it is...
Is the flagpole.
Is a flagpole.
Yeah, it's just a little wider, yeah.
And it is being driven by security.
Yep, yeah, it's definitely neat, I was in there today, trying to call Tim like that.
So I don't even know.
I know where the meeting was. So just want to get that on your, on your radar.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and it makes sense to make sure the public's aware and why we're doing what we're doing.
Is there any, is there any potential ill effects from a, a cell receiver?
10% at cell receiver, no, not that we got hurt, no. Yeah, well, we, yeah, we have to be careful, and we have to follow all the state requirements for things that can be close to kids.
Yeah, and this goes up to the state for approval, so they, you know, have that date up there.
This isn't just us making this decision.
All right. Onto our board reports, anybody have anything to mention?
I have one. Does anyone else? The Athletic Advisory Council met on October 25th, and the committee's made up of student, athletes, coaches, teachers, a board of ed member, boosters, parents, and school administrators. They discussed the following, new communication platforms, social media, Twitter is being used, something new called SportsU, it's a Section 1 new communication platform. They also discussed live streaming, some games, and that the new turf and track are completed and need to complete a final walkthrough of the project. They also said there's, there's a new record board and banners in the high school gym, which was fully funded by an alumni donation, which was approved by the Board of Ed, and the boosters had facilitated that as well as Matt Allen. And a new format they discussed for the end-of-season sports awards, they're going to do that for all senior athletes now at the end of the year, kind of like, I think they said it was like the IBM Award Ceremony, where each senior athlete will get at least a minute of fame. Instead of doing at the end of each season, they're going to have one special gathering in June, and that's basically what was discussed. It was a lengthy meeting, but that's, in a nutshell, what was discussed.
Thank you, that's helpful.
But go on social media, because they've really revamped, along with Brian, they've really worked very hard to revamp the whole social media aspect, so that you can really feel like you're part of sports, Grandma can feel like part of sports with the live stream, it's really nice.
Anybody else have any board reports? All right, so Communications, number report, does anybody else have anything? Then we go to approval of the minutes, so we have two minutes to approve the September 26th and the October 15th minutes. September 26th was that morning meeting, and then October 15th was our regularly scheduled evening meeting. Can I give a motion to...
I just had one correction, on the October, when, there was something about like 13.2, where I talked about, it was a book read, not a book fair.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing major.
Yep, no, fair enough. So with that edit, I'm going to motion to approve the minutes for both these states.
So moved.
So I wasn't here on the October 15th, but I was here for September 26th.
Oh, and I wasn't here for the 26th.
So you went to September 16th.
Yep, so all in favor of September 26th? Any abstention?